Calling the meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the public which stands one day hundred years eternally with love and justice. Roll call.
Pam Dobus.
Here.
Barry Christensen.
Here.
Connie Ruhl.
Here.
Darren McGregor.
Here.
Jim Modrak.
Here.
Ken Nagel. Ken Nagel. Ken, are you there?
Here. Can you hear me?
Now I can. Yep. Kim Turner.
Here.
Russ Pecusa.
Present.
Vince Scialzo.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. It is with great sadness that I share with you the unfortunate news that former school director Donna Cook passed away on Wednesday, April 22. Mrs. Cook served on the board from 2003 through 2019, with the last 10 years as board president. During her time as board president, she was admired for her organizational skills, and under her leadership, many things were accomplished, including the construction of the new high school at Bethel Park, the district-wide implementation of the One-to-One Chromebook Initiative. She will long be remembered for her leadership and her commitment to the district. We extend our deepest sympathies to her husband, Tim, sons Colin and Tyler, daughter-in-law, Brittany, and her beloved granddaughter, Alice. At this time, I would ask my colleagues and everyone watching this meeting to join me in a moment of silence to remember Donna Cook and her dedication to the Bethel Park School District. Thank you. At this time, I would like to have a motion to adopt the agenda for business items. Remember, when you make a motion, please state your name and when you second it also.
Jim Modrak motion to approve the business items.
Connie Ruhl motion, second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Modrak and seconded by Ms. Ruhl to adopt the agenda for business items. I'd like to remind everybody at this time that we have adopted a new kind of agenda for our business meeting. At our committee meeting last week, we went through every single item, and we decided which items didn't require any more discussion and could be part of what we call a consent agenda, which can be approved en masse at the beginning of the meeting with the other items then being the items that we might need to talk about. So that is a new way that we think we're going to be more efficient and less time-consuming during our meetings. So now we have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
It's open.
Anyone?
Darren, waiting for Darren.
Darren, you need to vote.
You guys, yeah, you guys, I'm okay with it. You guys just froze there for a minute.
Okay, so, yea.
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Motion passes nine zero. The next item is the approval of our minutes for March 24, 2020. I need a motion to approve.
Russ Pecusa, motion.
I second it, Darren McGregor.
It's been moved by Russ Pecusa and seconded by Darren McGregor to approve the minutes of our meeting on March 24, 2020. Any questions or comments? If not, then please vote.
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, motion passes nine zero. I'd like to announce executive sessions: March 24, 2020, April 2, 2020, April 9, 2020, April 16, 2020, April 21, 2020, April 23, 2020, and April 28, 2020, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Committee reports. Ms. Ruhl, you have some reports.
The AIU met yesterday by Zoom, and they have purchased 1,700 devices for school districts who really needed to have some devices to do some online learning from. They also are having classes for teachers who are not familiar with doing online learning, and they are now implementing classes for parents and guardians who also would like to learn the uses of online learning. That is for the AIU. Steel Center.
Excuse me, Ms. Ruhl, can that be accessed through their site for parents?
No, they're going to have it by Zoom also, but they have to notify the AIU and make an appointment.
Oh, okay.
Okay. For Steel Center, those students are continuing their classes. Our special needs students are being well attended to with phone calls as well as some online learning, and also that the NOCD people are agreeing to provide the NOCD tests for these students this summer, so that's a good thing. That's all.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay, I'd like to remind everybody that you may make public comments at our meeting at this time and/or after the meeting by emailing us at publiccomments@bphox.org, and we will read those. At this time, the public comments are limited to those items that pertain to our agenda, and we do not have any at this time. Oh, okay. We do have one.
There's one public comment in regards to Ms. Cook. If you, it's okay if I can read it.
Yes.
It's from John Delallo from 1565 Lucille Drive, Bethel. Mr. Delallo writes, "I read with great deal of sadness of the passing of Donna Cook, taken from us far too soon. Mrs. Cook devoted many years to the service of the students of Bethel Park. I have no words to extend to her family and her friends that possibly relieve their grief, but I have and will continue to pray for the repose of her soul. I would hope that all will recall her selfless service and join in a collective prayer. May the Lord bear her up on the eagle's wings to the bosom of Abraham. May she rest in the peace of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen." And that was from Mr. John Delallo.
Thank you. If anyone during the course of the meeting would like to email us for the comments at the end of the meeting, we will also be reading comments at the end of the meeting. Again, publiccomments@bphox.org for any comments. We'll now move into the business portion of our meeting, and our first item is the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have 41 items. Are there any items on that agenda that any board member would like to hold out? Okay, I would like to move then items one through 41 on the consent agenda, and I need a second. Second by Kim Turner. Okay, Ms. Turner is seconding that. So we've got items one through 41 on the consent agenda, been motioned by Pam Dobus and seconded by Kim Turner.
Hey Pam, this is Darren McGregor. I'm seeing 42.
Number 42 is our vote.
Okay, okay, there we go.
Thank you. Any discussion on any of those items? Okay, so if you would then click on 42, that's where we will vote.
Voting's open. Motion passes nine zero.
Motion passes nine zero. Okay, our next item is Mr. Scialzo, Curriculum Committee.
Okay, we have one item under Curriculum Committee, and that is high school elective courses. Would anyone like that to be held out?
So are you making the motion for that particular item?
Making the motion to approve.
Okay, I need a second.
Second, Ken Nagel.
Okay, so it's been.
Second, Ken Nagel.
Thank you. Mr. Scialzo made the motion, and Mr. Nagel seconded it, and Dr. DeMperio is going to do a brief summary of this particular, the electives.
Thank you, Mrs. Dobus. Each year, the high school offers additional courses, from AP courses to theater courses, a wide variety, to try to enrich our students' high school experience. One of the things that we're concerned about is, are the courses current? Are students still interested in taking these classes? So this initial list that is being approved touches upon the criteria of continuing to provide the youngsters in Bethel Park at the high school with high academic choices and also enrichment choices that are creative in nature. If the interest in some of these courses declines, we either eliminate the courses. This was not the complete list that was originally presented to the board, and we've already eliminated some classes in which the students showed little or no interest, and we have also, where there are very few students enrolled, have combined some classes to make it one class with more students in that class. So with that having been said, I think the electives have been well researched, they're ready to be approved by the board, and we do ask that the board approve them at this time so that the counselors and the administration at the high school can begin to prepare their course selection booklets so that the students know just, at this time, the students know exactly what options are available to them. Thank you, Mrs. Dobus.
Thank you. And the numbers in the courses increase and decrease during the drop ad period for students also, so it's imperative that we approve all of these at this time, knowing that there still might be some movement after the drop ad period occurs. Any other questions or discussion about this? Okay, so then at this time, let's vote.
Voting's open. Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor, Personnel Committee.
Yeah, we have two items on the agenda. One is reappraisal of the contract, two-year contract for Jessica Koval, and the second one is a MOU with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. Would anybody like anything held out?
I think we have to vote these one at a time in this system.
Mr. McGregor, we have to do these individually anyway.
Okay, let's do number one first. So Jessica Koval, 56,721, trying to toggle between one and two here. So, go ahead.
So I need a second for that particular motion.
Second to Modrak.
Second, Ken Nagel.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McGregor and seconded by Mr. Modrak that we approve this contract. Any discussion? Okay, open to voting, please.
Voting's open. Mr. Nagel. Motion passes eight to one.
The second one, Mr. McGregor.
Okay, we have the second item for personnel is the MOU with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, dealing with the changes in working conditions with COVID virus.
I need a second. I'll second Kim Turner. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McGregor and seconded by Ms. Turner to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers.
Quick, Ms. Dobus, I, it's been moved, like, with the COVID virus, however, we're talking about retirement dates and times to, you know, let's say that, you know, I do not want to retire, so we moved those dates back. So because of this COVID virus, we're extending that timeline for teachers to kind of just say, you know what, maybe I don't want to retire right now.
Any more questions? Okay, let's vote.
Voting's open. Motion passes nine to zero.
Motion passes nine zero. Mr. Christensen, Finance Committee. Even though they are the similar items, we have to do them separately, Mr. Christensen.
Okay, very good. Then, under Finance Committee, I move to adopt number one, updated the crowdfunding approval list, policy 702.1.
I need a second.
Second to Modrak.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Christensen and seconded by Mr. Modrak to approve the crowdfunding approval list. Any discussion on this item? Okay, let's vote.
Voting's open. Motion passes nine zero.
Motion passes nine zero.
Then for item number two, I move to adopt the approval of crowdfunding request.
Second, Russ Pecusa.
It's been moved by Mr. Christensen and seconded by Mr. Pecusa to approve the crowdfunding request. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Voting's open. Motion passes nine to zero.
Okay, Ms. Turner, policy, oh, motion passes nine zero. Ms. Turner, Policy Committee.
I believe we have to take number one and number two, and are we voting just on number, with number three, Mr. Karazie?
Final reading for number three, that's final reading, so we vote on that.
Okay. Number one is the waiver of the policy requirement for policy 213, and that is the assessment of student progress. That is remove the pass/fail grading system, but for nine through 12, with the recommended changes to the high school grading system for the fourth quarter in the 2019-2020 school year.
I need a second.
Second, Connie Ruhl.
It's been moved by Ms. Turner and seconded by Ms. Ruhl to waiver the policy requirements for policy 213 because of the conditions of this that we're living under right now. Any questions about that? Okay, let's vote.
Voting's open. Motion passes nine to zero.
Motion passes nine zero. Number two.
And the waiver of policy requirements in policy 217, the graduation requirements. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation of the suspension of identified provisions of Board policy 217, graduation requirements as they apply to the class of 2020 seniors and the class of 2021 juniors, to address the impact of COVID-19 during school closures, and this is the keystone graduation requirement that the state is also recommending we suspend.
Second, Russ Pecusa.
It's been motioned by Ms. Turner and seconded by Mr. Pecusa to waiver the policy requirements for policy 217 regarding the graduation requirements. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Voting's open. Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, and then approval of the final reading, the 006.2, the attendance at meetings via electronic communications. We did get the number for the, for our policy number, so I recommend the approval of the electronic communication.
I need a second.
Second, Connie Ruhl.
It's been moved by Ms. Turner and seconded by Mrs. Ruhl to approve the policy 006.2, attendance at meetings via electronic communications, which will replace our current policy of the same number. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Voting's open. Motion passes nine to zero.
Motion passes nine zero.
And then finally, we have revisions to policy 201, admission of students. This is the first of three readings, and the attachments and the red line were provided.
Okay, I only, I, so at this point, we're not approving this because it's the first reading, so we didn't have this available for the committee meeting, so this is the first reading. So if anyone has any questions about this, we can, you can ask them at this time. My only concern is, oh, goodness gracious.
You're making me get there. I said you're going to make me try and scroll on this, and I can't.
Is the first paragraph where it says Title 22, this is, I'm assuming this is up on the website, Ms. Turner, do you know? Is it under our policy revisions on the website? Or policies that you approved? Hello, is it?
Vicki Florida, yes, it is.
Okay, great, thanks. So as I'm looking at it, it's the third paragraph, it's right across from where it says Title 22. I just am a little concerned about the subjectivity of that sentence. There isn't any criteria other than a written request, a recommendation, and an approval. I didn't know whether, Amy, whether something could be in there regarding a proficiency on a readiness test or anything like that, or whether or not the recommendation of the district psychologist includes a readiness test of some kind. I was just concerned about, I don't have any problem with the approved schools or anything like that, I just, I'm a little concerned about the subjectivity involved in that first criteria.
I believe when we edited this and looking at other boards, and Amy, please correct me. There was, there was additional options, but the options were for the parent or guardian writing request letter to the superintendent, and then additional review by the district psychologist. I think we need to work on that last sentence a little bit more.
Yeah, I was, I mean, is this, is this PSBA language?
It's PSBA language and like about 14 different school districts from around the area.
Okay, so it's not uncommon, then, it's not.
Right, we just need to, we can shore up that language, that sentence.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I do, now that I read it for about the 19th time.
Because it just seems somewhat subjective rather than based on objective criteria.
Correct, so we can, we can rewrite that last.
So this is the first reading, so we can look at that.
Yes.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Well Pam, I just agree with you. I mean, when you read that sentence, it's like demonstrates readiness. What does, what does that mean?
Right, so we need to put that, I think we cut a little too much out of it.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I actually really like the rest of it, because we have had students who have attended kindergarten or first grade and other, and our policy didn't permit us to allow them in recently, so I really do like the rest of that, and I agree with that. It's just that first one, I was a little.
And I think, I think there were several edits that were passed around to the solicitor's office, too. I think we may have edited a couple words out that probably need to go back in.
Okay.
So I'll work with Amy and get that all corrected.
Okay, did you, did you hear what we were saying, Mrs. Zundel?
Did, I did. Thank you both for that. I've taken a note of that. And then there was one other thing on this policy, the version of it that I believe is posted and that you all are looking at, there may be, at the last section where it says kindergarten, I think there was a version that had that, there was, there's a clerical error here.
Yes, I see it now, so let's fix that, too, Amy.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah, I was Mary back on that.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments about that policy? Okay, we will now move to public comments that we have received. Mr. Pecusa, you said there's another one, would you read two?
There's two, there's two comments, actually.
Okay, would you read one?
Yes, absolutely. The first one is from Tracy Carnos, 5620 Tracy Drive, excuse me. Can we have any information that has been decided to date regarding the senior students? Are there any plans yet for graduation in caps and gowns or yearbooks, all of which have been paid for? Will our kids be getting them anytime soon? Excuse me. Ms. Dobus, the second comment.
Ms. Dobus, second comment's the same nature, from Pam Bronco from 5962 Irish Town Road. Just asking if there's any preliminary plans have been made regarding graduation and commencement ceremony.
Do you want to comment?
The comments that I would make is, I know the high school administration has been working very hard to set a graduation date later in the summer months. I, my understanding is just today. I, my understanding is just today Governor Wolf has made a proclamation that schools will not be able to hold what he refers to as a traditional graduation ceremony. So I'm going to have to meet with the administration and see what type of alternate plans can be made. And for the two individuals that asked that question, and I know there are many parents and students out there with the same concerns. I actually have a granddaughter who's a, a senior in high school, and I know how hard this is on families and children, particularly when they've been looking to have what I'd call a proper and traditional separation from high school. So this is a huge issue. I'll be working with the high school administration. And obviously, we've got to do it being compliant with the governor's order. Thank you, Mrs. Dobus.
Thank you. Any other comments have come in?
No.
Okay, at this time, then I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Connie Rule.
Second, Darren McGregor.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Rule and seconded by Mr. McGregor to adjourn the meeting. Can you, can we vote for that?
Yeah, it was giving me trouble there. Okay, now you can vote.
All right, good night, everyone. Thank you for watching.
Thank you.
See you next month.